Good evening, everyone. I'm Council President Colin Nash. The mayor is out this evening. We'll start the meeting tonight with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Corliss.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Morales.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Stead.
Here.
Willetts. By present, one absent.
All right. Next up are the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the minutes for morning and noon meetings on May twenty first, two thousand and twenty four.
Second.
All right, and motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Nash.
Yes.
Stead.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, next up, we have some special business. Today, we get to celebrate Festa della Repubblica Day. We have a couple proclamations here. And we have a representative who's going to receive this, Ron Gambassi. So I will turn it over to Council Pro Tem Stead, who's going to read the proclamation. We'll have a presentation and we'll do a quick, just two-minute recess and we'll go at ease and take a photo and present this and then come back up.
Great, so this is from the Office of the Mayor, City of Boise, State of Idaho. The proclamation reads, whereas Festa della Repubblica is the Italian National Day and Republic Day, and whereas it is celebrated June second each year with an official ceremony in Rome, and whereas it commemorates the nineteen forty-six Italian institutional referendum in which the Italian people went to the polls to decide their form of government post-World War II, and whereas the vote concluded with disbanding the active monarchy and establishing a republic by a vote. Whereas this was the first vote in Italy by universal suffrage, one person, one vote, and whereas June second, two Italians, is celebrated in a similar way to July fourth in the United States and July fourteenth, which is the French storming of Bastille Day. And whereas Idaho has about four hundred and fifty Italian citizens, several of whom are scientists, engineers, and researchers at Micron University of Idaho, I N L, H P, and elsewhere. And whereas, in addition to the Italian citizens making their home in Boise, there are many times that number of Italian Americans in the city and that there are many times that number of Italian Americans in the city and state. And whereas, the day is also a way for the Italian community to celebrate the differences of others and respect the freedom and rights of all. Now, therefore, I do by proclaim today as Festia della Repubblica Day in the city of Boise.
Thank you, council member. Ron, if you want to come up, we'll go down there and
Other council members would like to join me for a photo.
Yeah. We'll go at ease just for a moment to take the photo.
Oh, I think it's this right here. I think we've got several.
Okay, shall we do this?
Everybody scoot in.
Thank you, Ron, and Councilmember Stead, and thank you, council. We'll come back to order. Thank you for letting us share that with you. Um, now, we're done with special business, I believe. So we will move on to the Oh, yeah, we do have that. I'll entertain a motion for number two on the special business agenda. Oh, we are? Okay. Sorry, this isn't on my It's not on my script, so Jesse, do you want to present to us on S U B twenty-four-two and S U B twenty-four-three revised conditions of approval?
Mr. Mayor, council members, I don't have a full presentation. However, last month, on May fourteenth, we did hear S U B twenty-four-two and S U B twenty-four-three. There's quite a bit of discussion about pedestrian connectivity and how to best accommodate a sidewalk along Gold Run Avenue. In the memo submitted, the revised condition was added to put a public access easement over the micro pass as well as to allow for a reduction in the sidewalk in order to save trees around Gold Run Avenue. Is that memo is okay with everybody here?
Any questions, council?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the revised conditions on S U B twenty-four-two and S U B twenty-four-three and state that they are accurately reflected and and state that they accurately reflect the discussion and decision of council.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Nash.
Yes.
Stead.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, thank you, Jesse. And thank you, Councilmember Stead, for catching that. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
I just have one comment on there. It looks like Councilmember Morales is requesting zero dollars to go to Las Vegas. I think that is the cheapest Vegas trip I have ever heard of. So thank you for being frugal in your city travel.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
One of the items on here is a multi-use path easement in agreement between the city of Boise and Idaho Power. And I just wanted to make sure that I said thank you to Idaho Power for the partnership with this. Thank you for our pathways plan team. This is a big deal. This is a piece that we've been looking at for a while behind the Ada County Courthouse, and I think it's a really good step in kind of getting us where we need to go. And so while it's on the consent agenda, it, like all the other things, has my enthusiastic support and big gratitude towards our team who worked on this one.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah, just to speak to that, since you brought it up. I am grateful for the opportunity provided by the Hunt Institute, which has done some good work with actually state legislators in terms of advancing early childhood education. So looking forward to participating in a fellowship there with other city council members and mayors from across the country. Hopefully, stuff that we can bring back here to help with our kiddos here in Boise.
Thank you. All right. I'd entertain We did entertain a motion? We already have a motion? All right, my apologies. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Nash.
Yes.
Stead.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right. We have the proposed surplus of city-owned real property at two nine four four West Cherry Lane. This has already been presented to us in a consent agenda. Does anybody presenting on this?
No.
No, okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, oh, sorry.
Here you go.
I am available.
Right here. Yeah, go ahead.
I apologize. I am available and I have a brief presentation prepared if Mr. Mayor and the council members would like to hear it.
Sure, please refresh our memory on this.
Okay, absolutely. I will share my screen here briefly for you. Okay, so we are here tonight to share about a property that is being surplus. This is the beginning of the process for this. So this is a townhome off of Cherry Lane. Some of you may remember, we were here to talk about two, three other townhomes in the same complex that we surplus over the last year as well. This is our final property that we own in this area, and it is now vacant. And as you can see, some work has gone into the interior to bring it kind of up to a good standard for sale, and we are now ready to move forward with this process. So this is just the overview of the process, the code requirements that allow us to do this. And you may remember seeing a resolution that came forward at the beginning of May on the seventh regarding this property. So this will be sold as an opportunity for an income-qualified household to purchase. So we're targeting households that are at or below eighty percent of the area median income. This is a larger unit, so we have assumed a five-person household to help set that price. The sales price is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which, as you might imagine, is below the appraised value for the area. But setting it at this value will allow a household at that eighty percent-ish A M I to attain the opportunity for homeownership without spending more than thirty percent of their income towards housing. The proceeds from this sale would go back into Fund five forty-three, which is our property management fund, and help offset other costs that we have coming out of that fund. We have many requirements for the offers. Most of these are very standard. These are the same requirements that we used with the past homes that we surplus over the last year or so. We want to make sure that the buyers who are going to be moving into these homes are well set up for success in the future and not spending more than they need to on their housing and therefore having the funding that they need for the rest of their expenses across their lives. We will accept applications for this. Basically, the offer has to include all of these different components. And then we will verify the eligibility of the offers from folks that have been submitted and use a lottery system to accept a qualified offer. This is just a quick overview of the next steps in this process. So we are here tonight sharing with you in this public hearing. And then this will go on to second and third readings through the surplus ordinance. And we plan to list the property for sale at the end of the month and accept offers until the end of the day on July twelfth. At that point, we would begin that process of randomizing the offers and verifying the eligibility. So that is the end of my presentation, and I'm more than happy to stand for any questions that anybody might have.
Council, any questions from Melinda? Okay, thank you for that presentation, Melinda. This is a public hearing, so do want to open it up for any testimony, if there's any members of the public, either in person or online, who would like to testify on this. Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that O R D fifteen dash twenty-four be added to the first reading calendar.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second, clerk, will you please call? Any discussion on the motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I just wanted to applaud the staff for their thoughtful and diligent process in this. We know that the housing market is really tight in this city and, you know, this opportunity to to not get in a bidding war with with other families or other, I think, will go a long way and will really be like generationally changing for the family that ends up there. So I'm excited to see this go to market that way.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Quick question. Is the intention to read this for the first time tonight and move it to the second reading calendar?
Yep. We'll have the first, we'll have the first reading tonight, so. Councilmember Corliss?
No.
Okay, no further discussion. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Nash.
Yes.
Stead.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. O R D dash fifteen dash twenty-four. An ordinance declaring certain real property identified as Ada County Assessor's Parcel Number R one zero six one six zero zero two six zero and located at twenty-nine forty-four West Cherry Lane in Boise City, Ada County, Idaho, as underutilized or not used by the city for public purposes. Finding that the sale of the property is in the public interest, offering the sale of the property to an income-eligible buyer, authorizing city officials and staff to do all things necessary to conduct the real property sale transaction and establishing effective date.
All right, thank you. Up next on our agenda is C A R two-three, two-three, thirty-six, thirty-five West Elder Street, modification to a development agreement. Our presenter, David Moser. David, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. First, I'd like to note these applications are based on the legacy code and not the modern zoning code. The applicant is requesting a modification to a development agreement to change the site restrictions to accommodate two hotels and a preliminary plat for three buildable lots. During the May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, the proposed two hotels and the height exception for the South Hotel were approved and not appealed, and therefore only the D A and the subdivision will be for council tonight. As seen here, the area is primarily comprised of detached single-family homes adjacent to the north and west with office and hotels adjacent to the east along Elder Street, across I eighty-four interstate to the south. And across I eighty-four interstate to the south is the Boise Airport. In addition, Oahu Park abuts the property to the northwest. The subject property is also located within the airport influence zones, which limit the density for residential developments and require additional soundproofing. In addition to the D A modification, the applicant requested a conditional use permit for two hotels and a height exception, which was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on May thirteenth. The project design included connecting the public streets through the site with a three-story, forty-five-foot-high hotel building on the north parcel and a four-story, approximately fifty-seven-foot-high building, hotel building, which is to the top tower element on the south parcel adjacent to the freeway. The height of the L O zone is forty-five feet, and therefore the height exception was requested. Also, the applicant is requesting a subdivision to locate each hotel on its own buildable parcel, as seen here, and the third buildable parcel, which is also requested on the south side of Elder Street, has no proposed development at this time and will remain landscaped for now. As for the history of the D A, in two thousand, the subject property was rezoned L O D D A to accommodate an original proposed office development. However, the office development was never constructed and the property remained vacant for about twenty-four years. Specifically, the development agreement placed restrictions on building height, building size, access based on building locations on the site. The proposed modification removes these design restrictions and adjusts the development agreement so it references the proposed hotel project instead of the original development. As such, the applicant requests to remove these design restrictions from the D A and adjust the D A accordingly for it to allow for the construction of the hotels. The specific D A modifications are listed here on this slide and the slide are also within the project report. In particular, the development agreement limited the building height and size at different locations on the site. These include limiting the building height to one and two stories on the north side of the property and limiting the building to three stories on the south side of the property adjacent to the freeway, as seen on this plan. The D A has also prohibited the connection also prohibited the connection of Elder Street to St. Andrews Drive. Removing these restrictions is the main goal of the modification. In addition to the D A modification, the applicant is requesting to subdivide the property into three buildable lots with the connection of right-of-way through the site, as seen on the preliminary plat here. The planning team received letters expressing concerns with the project from the public and the Hillcrest Neighborhood Association. The primary concerns expressed by the public involve connecting Elder Street to St. Andrews Drive through the subject property. The main concern is that connecting the streets would greatly increase the traffic or the amount of traffic through the neighborhood. The planning team contends that a majority of the hotel traffic will continue to use Elder Street to access Vista, which is the primary roadway that connects the airport to downtown. Also, St. Andrew Drive and Elder Street are stubbed to the subject property on both sides of the property with the intent that they be connected when the property redeveloped. Providing this public-street connection is also encouraged by the policies and goals of the conference of plan. Therefore, the planning team and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of C I R twenty-three dash zero 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 two-three and S U B twenty-three dash zero zero five-eight. Thank you.
Thank you, David. David, I did one question. There's a, seems like the height exception is being requested for the south side. There is an amendment on the north side, but there's no conditional use permit, if I'm understanding that correctly. Was there ever a conversation about a conditional use permit for the height exception on the north side of the property?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the north, the hotel building on the north parcel actually complied with the height of the zone, which was forty-five feet, and that building will not exceed forty-five. And I believe there's a condition as such.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for staff. We had some late correspondence worried about parking in the area and at the park. What can we encourage the residents to do? Even, it sounds like they have an issue right now whether this project goes through or not. Is there, can they, do they have any outlet for, is it Art Parking Services or A C H D? Do you know that they could maybe reach out to connect about restricted parking signs or maybe no overnight parking at the park or things like that? That might help alleviate some of those hotel guests parking within their neighborhood?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, they could definitely reach out to the Howie District or even to the city. I think we do have like, and try to establish a residential parking district. I think the applicant has worked with parks to provide additional parking for the park within one of the developments. Also, they could reach out to the Parks Department about establishing or signing the park so that people don't use that parking lot for overnight services or stays.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you, David. Next up, we have the applicant. I have Joshua Leonard from Clark Wardle and also Nicolette Womack.
Council president members, Nicolette Womack from Kimley Horn.
Welcome.
Address is one one zero zero West Idaho Street, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven zero two.
Okay, take it away.
Awesome, can we get the PowerPoint up?
I see one right here.
Oh, awesome.
Can you see it down there?
I can't, and I forgot to print it.
How about now?
Awesome, perfect, thank you so much. Council president members, thank you for your time tonight. We're excited to bring this project before you. So again, I'm a planner with Kimley Horn. Joshua Leonard and Preston Rutter are land use attorneys with Clark Wardle, and then we have members of our development team, online and in person. It's important to note, there are two different development teams on this project. So there's one for the North Hotel and one for the South Hotel, so we can draw questions accordingly. So again, before you tonight, previously approved was the conditional use permit for those hotels and the height exception on the South Hotel. So we're coming before you for that D A modification to update the language of the D A and a preliminary plat to subdivide into three buildable parcels. So this process has gone, this project has gone through a long process. It actually started all the way back in two thousand and twenty-two. There was a pre-application meeting and a neighborhood meeting at that time. There was additional pre-application meetings held in August of two thousand and twenty-three, another neighborhood meeting in September of two thousand and twenty-three. Application got submitted back in November, and then we had P N Z just barely, and we're here for council. We'll walk you through some of the things that changed along the way as well. But again, our project is very close to the Boise Airport. anticipate a lot of the hotel guests will be using, utilizing the Boise Airport and the resources that come with that. Again, we are adjacent to Oahu Park, and there are several hotels to our east. And then just along the south, you can see our adjacency to the interstate. So again, the land use designation for this is office. And this project itself was developed with several of the parcels to the east. So you'll see that L O D designation and several others to the east where this was originally anticipated to be part of that project. So again, the zoning is L O D D A. Previous applications, the airport did say that they wanted to limit residential in this area, and there'll be additional sound level buffering requirements as well. So previously, you had apartments. We are proposing only hotels and the allowed uses within the M X one zone on that vacant parcel. There was a little bit of confusion in some of the comments about that, so we just want to make that clear. Only hotels are proposed and being reviewed tonight. So North Hotel required one hundred and four spaces, providing one hundred and twelve parking spaces. South Hotel required one hundred and seventy-six spaces, providing one hundred and eighty-nine. And then on that one, you can actually see the extension of Elder Street and St. Andrews Drive as well. North Hotel landscape plan, so this is where you can see the two to four spaces dedicated to parks and recreation for Oahu Park. You can see our hotel highlighted in yellow and the hotel pet park, which was added based on neighborhood feedback. And here, there's just a quick overview of those heights. So on the North Hotel, the body of our building is at thirty-four feet. The overall highest point is forty-five feet. This hotel does not have a chain or anything planned at this moment, so it's a very conceptual block format. And we wanted to provide some information about our adjacency to neighbors. So you can see we are over one hundred and fifty feet to the adjacent residential homes, and you can see that there is a mixture of different landscape buffers that are layered to provide additional buffering. South Hotel shown in yellow. Heights on this one, you can see the highest point that needs a height exception is the fifty-seven foot nine inches. And again, that's to get the elevator shafts and everything moving up to that highest point and to add those architectural features. The body of the building is in compliance with the high limit of the zone, forty-four feet. It's just those architectural features that are pushing it up. The great thing about this hotel is it actually does act as a sound buffer to the interstate. You'll see that the sound buffer actually ends partially through some area, partially through our site. So this will inherently act as a sound buffer. So the adjacent residential homes, we have an overall view in a second, too. Eighty-three feet to the nearest home, you can see our highest architectural feature there at fifty-seven nine inches. And then you can see the additional buffering and layering before you get to the interstate sound. So again, showing high level, you can see we're somewhere between one hundred and thirty and one hundred and fifty-five feet on the North Hotel to the neighbors and one hundred and twenty feet, about eighty-two to one hundred and twenty feet on the South Hotel. Again, the preliminary plat. Revisions along the way. Through the process, we've appreciated the neighborhood's feedback, and we've done our best to incorporate that feedback where we can. The revisions have included increasing the landscape buffer along residential and I eighty-four, combining the proposed parcels as directed, limiting lighting and signage lighting. We've added fenced-off areas for hotel room pets specific to them. We've reduced the height on the South Hotel, and we've removed one whole story on the North Hotel. So these are several of the conditions listed in the staff report. We're in agreement with all of them. We just, did just want to note, though, in the staff report, there's a few items that talk about the L O D zone and the D A. Want to make sure all that becomes M X one, which I'm sure you guys are stoked about. And then we want to be sure it's clear that that future parcel could redevelop in compliance with the standards of the M X one zoning. With that, we'll request your approval of the D A mod and preliminary plat. Stand for any questions.
Could you speak to the height reduction and floor reduction? Do you have any idea of like, this is going to cost us X number of rooms? Do you have any idea what type of impact those, the height reduction and the floor reduction will cause for the projects?
Yes, can we reshare the PowerPoint? Sorry, I could do the math really quick. Are you talking about on the North Hotel, Council President, or the South?
I mean, it seems like there was both. It seems like you removed a floor on the North Hotel.
We did.
And then there was a height reduction on the South Hotel, but I don't know like what the impacts of the project are. And that's kind of what I'm looking for.
Yeah, so the required parking is based on one bedroom, one parking space per bedroom, our hotel room. So on the North Hotel, if we are at, I believe it's four stories, let me check. One, two, three, four. That is somewhere around hundred divided by four, and that's about twenty-five rooms. On the South Hotel, we're at one hundred and seventy-six, and I think we're at five. One, two, three, four. So it's whatever one hundred and seventy-six divided by four is, which I'm guessing is something around forty.
So, so you cut a floor off both the North Hotel and the South Hotel?
We have, but they're different architectural features because they're different chains, so they have different architectural design standards.
So we think we've lost probably between twenty-five and maybe forty-five rooms on each project?
Uh, Council President, that is correct. The important thing to note about that is, you know, our hotels really feed our airport and make sure that we're able to be that thriving economic center so we can have business guests stay and do business in our city or expand, you know, tourism opportunities. So the impact does sustain itself through the future, especially as land gets more and more hard to get north of the hotel. I'm sorry, north of the airport, so.
Okay. Council, any further questions for the applicant? Councilmember Stead?
Actually, mine's a staff question, so I'll wait.
Okay, council member. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I have a question for you. So I just want to confirm what we saw on the record from prior meetings.
Yeah, I have a question for you. So I just want to confirm what we saw on the record from prior meetings. You don't have any feelings one way or the other. You're indifferent to the requirement that Elder and St. Andrews remain disconnected, just connected via emergency access?
Council President, Council Member, happy to clarify. So again, yes, we are indifferent. Ideally, we don't care one way or another, and this project is easy. So most of our hotel guests are going to strongly prefer going eastward to Vista. I'm not sure of many people who go to a hotel and just wander around and take all the weird routes to get anywhere. So they are really going to strongly prefer to the east. Some of the fears that was talked about in the previous hearing was, there are some semis that are trying to use the lot right now to park on because it is vacant, and so some of that will go away with this lot actually being developed, so.
Perfect, and then just follow up on that. I think the one scenario I can think of would be like the Albertsons Open. Could you see quite a bit of lodging traffic wanting to head west in that, that particular scenario?
Council President Members, that would be an event-based situation, and with that comes all kinds of other traffic and parking demands, just like any other event in town of that size. So that should be taken care of with the process is already in place.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halliburton.
I think you already said this, so I apologize if you're repeating it. Can you talk to us just a little bit more about like the physical buffer that is in between the hotels and the houses? I think it was a, was it a wall?
Council President Members, there is some existing fencing in that area, and I believe we're required to bring that fencing up to code as well. But you can see the landscape buffer widths in this area. There are some power lines that require us to use some shorter trees than we'd ideally prefer on, right on the edge. But luckily, we got some great parking areas that will help with that parking demand, and we can put some bigger trees in those parking areas.
Are you having to replace that fence or do anything with the fencing, or is it just what's there?
Council President Members, I believe we're utilizing most of the existing fencing, but if there are deficiencies, we'd bring it up to code.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, council, any further questions for the applicant? Alrighty, thank you very much. I believe we have a representative from the Neighborhood Association here, Ashley Malloy. Ashley?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Ashley Malloy with the Hillcrest Neighborhood Association, forty-one oh-three US Pasadena, Boise, Idaho. The HNA Board previously supplied comments to the city and developer for this project, and we do appreciate that some of the comments were taken into consideration. However, our primary concern still remains that would require St. Andrews Drive and Elder Street be open to vehicular traffic. The HNA does not support this change to the development agreement. Our neighborhood fought hard during the original DA process to prohibit this connection. And I'd just like to specify that we're not as concerned about the traffic from the hotels coming into the neighborhood, but more so the traffic from all of the offices that travel through the neighborhood that we already see currently. And we think there'll be more with the offices being built out there, just east of the neighborhood. Between the proximity to the freeway and airports noise, fumes, St. Andrews is one of the most challenged streets in our entire neighborhood regarding quality of life, home stability. This area of our neighborhood has lost their access to the VRT, it may lose their neighborhood school, it may be exposed to S-16s at Galwinan starting in 2027, hoping this street would just be the first step to our residents. Be detrimental. And Boise Blueprint does state that one of its main principles is stable neighborhoods, and we think that this would destabilize this section of our neighborhood. The Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended the opening of St. Andrews, and we respectfully disagree with their decision. What they did not take into consideration is that from the intersection at Oberland and Roosevelt to Waihi Park, there are no stop signs. There are no stoplights, there's no speed cushions, there's no chicanes, there are no school zones to slow motorists down. So this is just a straight shot from up Roosevelt, up by the golf course. And it's, you already have traffic now, and if it's going to be a straight shot to Vista, a lot of people are going to take it. For the reverse of that route, there is only one stop sign. And so, St. Andrews is also only thirty feet wide, and homes are only set back fifteen feet. We have a lot of people that walk, we have a lot of people that bike along this street. Opening it to a city collector, a commercial collector as ACHD has, is, is going to be detrimental again. Opening the street to vehicular traffic, all vehicular traffic, is too car-centric, in our opinion, for a city that is trying to move towards multimodal transportation. So having access to the bus stop at Vista, having access, biking down Roosevelt to the proposed bike lanes to Nez Perce and down Latah are important to us. As mentioned in the City Council, we had a traffic study reviewed by a subject matter expert, and they found that the traffic study to be inadequate that was supplied by the applicant. And we think the increase in traffic will significantly be a detriment to this neighborhood. We support the connection for pedestrians and bicycle access between St. Elders, but providing direct unlimited vehicular access will have a negative effect without limiting loads on St. Andrews, extensive traffic calming on Roosevelt, and having safe places for our people to walk and bike, because there are no sidewalks on these streets. The mid-century neighborhood, it wasn't planned to have sidewalks. The change to the DA may risk creating a city for every car and not a city for everyone. We ask that you keep the current DA stipulation in place, which prohibits the opening of St. Andrews Drive to all vehicular traffic. And thank you.
Got a question for you, Ashley, if you would entertain it. We had some questions here tonight about, both about potential just restricting to emergency access between there, but also what is the Neighborhood Association's feeling about the, the height reductions that, that were imposed or that the applicant agreed to? Were there strong feelings in the Neighborhood Association about the height of these buildings?
So for the vehicular access, for emergency, that's what the original DA called out for, and that's what our Neighborhood Association pushed for in the beginning. And then for the height, they could be lower. Having a three-story building behind a mid-century ranch house is not ideal. There are some, some concerns that I think Councilmember Halliburton brought up about the fence. And so having them actually, I thought their plans called for a fence along that back perimeter. So actually having them put up a taller fence as code allows would be ideal as well. But we are glad they at least dropped from the four stories to the, to this three stories. That was an improvement from the original plans, and they have done some other improvements. Another concern early on with the project is lighting, so having downshoed lighting and not having like twenty-foot-tall lights in the parking lot shining into the neighbors' bedrooms, that's also a concern.
Wait, but you, you would say that your top priority is the access between Elder and St. Andrews, correct?
Yes, that is our, our main concern for tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. One of the city's goals is to reduce commute times if we can, and so I know that their, the concern was the access to the office buildings nearby. I guess, do you think it would be more likely used by neighbors in your neighborhood coming from those offices? Or your concern is that it's from people all over the city heading into the neighborhood?
We see a lot of traffic from all over the city, like coming up from the Depot Bench area, coming up from the Bora area up those streets and through the neighborhood currently. And we just, once people find out a quick route to their office or a quicker route across the city, like I do, I use Nez Perce instead of Oberland because it's so much faster, you don't have stoplights. It's just, people are going to go that route. So that is our main concern. And there's, like I said, there's nothing between Roosevelt and Elder to slow anybody down.
That was going to be my next question, Mr. Mayor. I wondered if, I guess if there were additional stop signs put in or, you know, traffic calming efforts, I guess, would the neighborhood be more amenable, you know, like be more open to something like that?
I think if there was traffic calming built into this project, along Roosevelt and within that St. Andrews area, would be more amenable to it. But I don't know if you can, you don't really control the roads.
No, I can't control that.
So right now, I mean, maybe in the future, we could have that access be open if there's traffic coming on Roosevelt and St. Andrews. But for the time being, like, until we work with ACHD, which we're continually trying to work with ACHD to do traffic calming, we're doing a traffic calming study on Roosevelt in, in the fall, but it has to meet, of course, certain criteria. So we are working with them, but it's more of the cart before the horse. So we really want to slow people down and not have that access until we can have traffic calming in the neighborhood.
Thanks, Ashley.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halliburton.
Good to see you. I was biking around this area just not too long ago, was doing some volunteer work up at Waihi Elementary School. I'm curious, are there, there's, are there two St. Andrews streets, like a north one and a south one? It seems like they're like...
No, so if you're looking at Google, sometimes Google, where Passage or Waihi is located, it's actually Pasadena Drive, but Google keeps renaming it St. Andrews, so it shows as like a St. Andrews.
So it goes like Catalina and then Pasadena?
Catalina and then Pasadena.
Okay, Pasadena.
They're all named after golf courses.
Perfect, all right. So that makes a little bit more sense, because when I was looking at the Google map, I was trying to wrap my head around which St. Andrews Drives we were talking about all the time. So I'll, I'll follow up with, with staff about some questions about the fence. Again, I want to return back to maybe just the extension of the street there. So there's the ability for it to be stubbed off and shut down to all traffic. If I'm, if I live on St. Andrews, close to the hotel, and I want to get to Waihi Park, and I'm walking or riding my bike, it actually would be a little bit faster and quicker to like cut through the hotel where it would be, right?
Correct, yeah. And that's what, we, we aren't opposed to having bicycle access or, or walking because with the VRT taking away the bus stop at the elementary school, it's now in Vista, so it's, it's better to walk straight through that empty lot now to get to the bus stop.
Yep, so if it were closed to car traffic, we would probably want to make sure that it was still open for pedestrian and bicycle traffic to get through?
Correct, that's what we want, yeah.
Okay, great. And then just kind of another question here, and I realized that, you know, you've talked about this already. If, if again, if I live on St. Andrews and I'm driving and I want to go over to Vista, at this point, I can't go over to Elder Street, so I'm kind of going up, I'm going around, I'm going back down, and then I'm going out to the road, right? It's kind of like a weird sort of like pathway to get there, instead of just being able to cruise right on through. So would there, if you lived on St. Andrews Street, couldn't you also argue that maybe there would be some benefits for them to be able to get out a little bit easier without having to drive by as many houses and take as many turns on the way out?
Yeah, so it's interesting. I mean, I live, if I lived on St. Andrews, I would probably prefer a straight shot out to Vista, but it's actually the neighbors in this area that don't want the street opened. And they voice concerns at meetings that they don't want it open, they don't mind the current route that they've taken for sixty years. So it's, it's more of keeping that area of the neighborhood, it already has a lot of noise and fumes, and keeping it quiet, so not opening it up to additional issues.
Great, thank you. I think that there's going to be, usually at the end of the presentation, the neighborhood has a chance to come back up and respond. I think at the very end. Where am I going with this? So we, we can't, we wouldn't be able to require traffic calming on Roosevelt because the property actually doesn't go up against it, but there are sometimes things that we can do as far as sidewalks around the area, connection problems that actually border the property. And so I guess what I would ask is that, when you come up a little bit later, that you're thinking about, are there pedestrian improvements that need to be on site? I can't think of any off the top of my head besides making sure that if the street was closed, that you would allow bikes and pedestrians through. But if there were things, and it would most likely be on that entry on Elder Street, like sometimes we'll have a place that has to put in new sidewalks, or separated sidewalks, or things along those lines. And those, I think, are probably the areas where there could be some input as well. Thank you.
Ashley.
Councilmember Corliss.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight and for presenting on the app on the Neighborhood Association. One quick question, I just wanted to clarify. So on, I gotta pull back up my map here. On St. Andrews Drive, you said there's no sidewalks, is that correct?
Yeah, like right along, I think there's maybe like one tiny portion of sidewalks. That's like way, way down towards Roosevelt, but like I would say ninety percent of the, the street does not have sidewalks.
So the, so people there who were coming out of their houses and going for a walk and walking their dogs, they're really in the roadway, right? And then have to walk down there, so traffic could be a big concern, additional traffic.
Yeah, and there's normally parking, like people park on both sides of the street, so it narrows and you have people, there's constantly people out there walking. Big walking.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Ashley, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Halliburton, I just confirmed with legal that there is no rebuttal for the Neighborhood Association. So if there's anything you'd like to say now, this is your time.
Okay, well, if, if with, with Councilmember Halliburton, like, we would be open to having sidewalks improved and pedestrian access at that connection, but leaving it closed to all vehicular traffic as in cars, not bikes and people, so.
Yeah, thank you, Ashley.
Yeah.
Alrighty, we'd open up to the public. Any members of the public here, either online or in person, that would like to testify on this particular application? Anybody online? Okay, we have an individual online?
Mr. Mayor, sorry, can I ask one question of staff before we get into testimony? David, I was curious, I can come up with my own assumptions, but I wondered, and maybe it's just because of the park, but I know recently, and this wasn't your project, so also know that your knowledge on that one is limited, but recently had a project in the same area of town where the staff really stood by not over-parking the space. And in this, in this application, we're seeing the recommendation to exceed the, the requirement for both of the properties or both of the hotels. Can you speak to why staff is supporting that in this case?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, having, looking at the parking counts, there are required one, one parking space per, per bedroom. And I don't, at that point, I don't think they're exceeding it that, by that much. And particularly for the North Hotel, when they remove the floor, they, they end up dedicating some of those parking spaces to, for the use by the Parks Department. And I believe even on the South Hotel, although they do exceed the minimum, but it isn't by a lot, and I can, and I don't have the parking counts directly in front of me, and I can let maybe the applicant speak to it, but it isn't a substantial exceeding the minimum.
Thank you.
All right, online testimony, any individual raise their hand?
Mr. Mayor, we're having a technical difficulty, it'll be a minute.
Okay. Well, we will... We can keep the public hearing open and go back to the applicant. Or if there's any additional questions for staff, we could entertain them at this time.
Yeah, I'll do another question for staff.
Councilmember Halliburton.
David, thank you. If we, if we were to, if we were to stub the street so that it didn't go all the way through, does that change any of ACHD's plans or requirements for egress going in and out? Are there any issues with us if we did close that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I believe ACHD, under condition number two, did specifically dictate that the, the road be connected through, although that is what, although that is what the site plan was showing. And I also believe on page ten of their, of their project report, they do list out a number of reasons that connecting the project would be, would be beneficial. But, that being said, I suppose that, you know, that the Highway District could review this again and see whether or not that would have a detrimental impact on the project or on their street connectivity or their traffic. I can't speak for them, per se, if a change in project could be supported in that matter.
Okay, I'll, I'll, thank you for bringing that up. I'll take a look at the report that they submitted on here and just review that. Thank you.
We don't have a representative from ACHD here, do we?
I don't, I don't believe so.
Alrighty.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
David, question for you. When we look at parking, do we look at types of parking? So for example, a spot that would fit a semi truck and trailer at a hotel? Do, as staff, do we ever have recommendations, do we see recommendations for types of parking, maybe larger parking that allows for trailers?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in certain circumstances, depending on the, on the, on the zone or the use, we might look at different type of parkings for, for semi, but usually, and trailers, but usually it's more the industrial zones where we expect that type of traffic. In this case, I, they, they were not considered.
Okay. Josh, did you have anything further to add on the? Josh, did you have anything further to add on the ACHD question? I, I saw you have some body language out there back there that might indicate that.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I do believe we have a representative ACHD online available. Just wanted to point that out.
Um, do you mind if we take this public testimony that we got them up and then we'll come back to ACHD on that? So if the ACHD representative, if you could be on deck, and then who do we have up first, clerk?
Mr. Mayor, this is Brock Adley.
Okay. Brock, uh, you have, uh, take it away.
Well, uh, thank you for your time. Um, I live at 3816 West Pasadena, so that's, uh, that's the thoroughfare. I think we're talking a lot of, um, it heads down and connects with Roosevelt. And so I just want to bring this to everybody's attention. I, just earlier in May, I had my car hit in the driveway. So it was actually parked in my driveway and somebody using Pasadena as a thoroughfare, um, had hit a cherry picker in front of the house that, um, Idaho powers using to replace the power poles and then hit my parked car. Um, and so while I'm not terribly concerned with the hotel or anything regarding that night, and I kind of understand that through the planning activity, you know, you guys are going to do some nice things with the park and the parking and all that stuff. And, and I'm very happy about that. But that circumstance still creates an impact, um, through Pasadena all the way into Roosevelt. And so I just want to voice, uh, my concerns that we're, we're making that problem worse. Um, and so, you know, with the amount of traffic that we're already seeing, I think it's really hard to speculate that, you know, we're going to have less traffic because everybody at these hotels is going to be moving eastward towards Vista. Um, and we've had ACHD come out and I, I don't think that they've given us a lot of evidence to show that, uh, you know, they did a, a very good, um, but, but the time and effort to actually do the traffic impact study as such, so, so we can understand, um, the burden that we have going through the neighborhood.
All right, Brock, thank you for your testimony. Uh, we have a representative from ACHD here. Is that Edinson?
Thank you, uh, Council President Nash. Uh, yes, absolutely. So I, I just wanted to address the first question, uh, from, uh, Councilmember, uh, Halliburton regarding the, his question about if, what would happen if, uh, if the council decided of closing the connection? So, um, I, I believe that ACHD would, would like us to review again the, the application because that would, that's a significant change to the, uh, to the modi, it will be a modification to the development, to what we review originally. So, um, based on our policy, we would desire to see that, uh, a, an increase of connectivity, uh, since, uh, in, in that connection of the existing street, based on our, uh, as we describe in our staff report, uh, because we believe that it, it, there's benefits behind it, including reduction of vehicle miles, travel, increase of access for emergency vehicles. Um, and I could read you through the bullet points, but it is on the staff report, but, uh, and I was not able to, um, listen to the question, the second question, because I was joining at that moment. So if there, if you could repeat it to me, I could address it. Um.
Councilmember Halliburton, do you have a clarification on any questions you asked for Edinson?
Yeah, I think, I'm not, I can't remember exactly what the second question was, but, um, can you speak to some of the things in the, in the staff report? I'm kind of pulling it up and going through it right now, but just some of the things that you had highlighted in there, if you would.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, so, uh, as part of our, uh, and we have it, it's part of our policy manual. So in 7208 point two point four, uh, here, and here we say the, uh, benefits of those three connections. I think, um, similar to what the city of Boise staff mentioned, this has been a stuck street that have been planned, uh, in previous development. So the intent has always been, uh, that connection. Um, I would clarify that, uh, this section of Elder Street connecting to Andrew Street, uh, is not considered a collector's street for us. Um, but we would build it based on the standards of a commercial roadway, uh, which is highlighted in, uh, or in the staff report. Um, going back to the benefit of connectivity, uh, so one of the things that it would include, include reduce of the additional access point for to a street system, promote efficient delivery services. And, and it includes the promote orderly development. The other item that, um, we include in the staff report is that we are, um, recommending adequate traffic calming as well. Um, this is, I think, is part of the, uh, application, which, uh, I think that applicant can speak more about, but we, it's highlighted in the staff report.
Okay, thank you. I'll follow up with the, um, applicant about that.
Councilmember Corlos?
Yeah, I have a question, um, for, um, our staff here at ACHD.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Um, so with, with the access there, the, uh, ACHD is recommending through there and understanding that the, um, that roadway has no sidewalks to keep neighborhoods and their pets safe, would ACHD also be installing sidewalks down that, down that roadway? In agreement with, with connecting this road?
President Nash, Councilmember, uh, certainly, uh, so this is something that, uh, it has not been, uh, identified as in previous plans. And just because that connection didn't exist right now, the, uh, through our neighborhood plans, integrated, uh, plan, integrated, I double checked just recently and we don't show that project. So it will be something that we would have to work, uh, if the city moves forward with, uh, with its development and C solutions, if the city is looking into prioritizing that type of project moving forward. Uh, so we can certainly coordinate and I can communicate this, uh, as part of my notes, uh, to my leadership.
I'll follow up. Okay. I guess my concern is that if ACHD is the one, the entity that's asking for that connection, um, but then asking the city to put in the sidewalks or to making that a priority. Because if, if we're asking for that connection, there's going to be a significant increase in traffic. Um, I think we need to be mindful and protective of the neighborhood, of the neighbors that have been there and live in those properties today and don't have safe travel, um, on sidewalks outside of their homes. So, um, I, I guess it's less of a question and just a more of a statement, um, of concern of having, being willing to approve a thoroughfare without making the necessary infrastructure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember.
Mr. Mayor, um, I did remember my second question.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, and I've got the traffic, um, analysis in front of me now. I think my, my second question was if it was closed, um, would it actually meet the traffic needs from the hotel to not have two different, um, entry and exit points? So like, is it creating any sort of problems for egress, um, and ingress to the hotel if there's not, um, a connection all the way through it?
Mr. Nash, uh, Councilmember, Council President Nash, uh, Councilmember Halliburton. So, uh, the short answer is hard to say because the traffic impact study is developed by the developer and the applicant and it's reviewed by ACHD. And, uh, I think from what I could see in the staff report, which we currently do not reflect, uh, significant issues, I would say like, we might still see that outcome. But I wouldn't be able to respond with, uh, confirm, with a confirmation, uh, simply because we haven't seen any different data behind it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Looking at the analysis, it looks like really the main point is that if their traffic isn't allowed to go through, it's just going to go through somewhere else. And so rather going through the, um, you know, the shortest distance between point A and point B, it's going to go up and around and through a bunch of different neighborhoods to potentially get to some of the same locations.
I think that would be, uh, if we close it, uh, the way I, I would, I would imagine that how it works is this neighborhood that the residents that live adjacent on the west side of that connection would benefit of that, uh, that route towards Vista, and that would be the main through fair. Uh, but, uh, based on the information we currently have, uh, I would, uh, that's just an assumption that I can make, not necessarily confirmation of anything.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Edinson. We appreciate you answering our questions. Okay, um, no one else lined up to testify. Uh, we will bring the applicant back. For any additional comments and questions for?
Council President members, um, can we get the PowerPoint back? I'm a visual person, so I like to do everyone a favor and give you some visuals. Awesome. Thank you. Um, Council President members, um, thank you for your time tonight and thank you, um, to the neighborhood, uh, members as well for speaking on this item. We have all benefited from the discussion here tonight, um, so excited to work through this together. Um, regarding the connectivity, I will try to keep it brief. Again, our client is not particularly swayed one way or another that they have to have this. Um, in the process of trying to comply with staff and ACHD, um, they did propose, um, a, uh, center landscape island, um, in the roadway connection. Um, and that was not in compliance with ACHD's standards. It was a traffic calming measure and they said to look through other traffic calming measures, which could include a bulb out. Um, so happy to comply with that, um, with ACHD. Um, I did just want to point out on the connectivity issue, the, the new code, which is not part of this applicant, but speaks to the values of the city. Um, and Boise City Staff and ACHD and Planning and zoning commission have really emphasized the importance of connectivity here. And it's not that common that we all get along. So, um, I, I would just say, you know, we are happy to work through this, um, item. Um, it is important to note that, um, our roadway extension, um, will include on-street parking. Um, so that is a, uh, benefit. Um, just wanted to give you some visuals of the neighborhood. Um, so, um, in the neighborhood, Elder Street to the east includes attached sidewalks. There's a little bit of detached further down. We will be doing detached sidewalks, which will be great for the neighborhood. Um, and the Country Manor Club, um, to carry Country Club Manor to our west. That is the other extension of St. Andrews has no sidewalks. Um, also just wanted to point out, there's a lot of traffic discussion here tonight. It's just important to know what we're talking about. The neighborhood already, if you go down Elder Street, you can go up Hawaii Park and go on to Pasadena already. So that traffic connectivity is already happening. Um, the traffic conditions a lot of people are talking about are Pasadena Drive, which has a school, um, at the park and there's a lot going on over there. That's a very different traffic condition than St. Andrews and Elder Street. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to say about connectivity is there are benefits on a life safety issue discussion in terms of how do we get police officers and fire trucks to these homes as fast as possible should things occur, people age and they need more care. Um, so that's just something that I know, um, reflects the values of, um, several of the people have weighed in on this. Um, in general, I did want to talk about the landscaping. Um, we have gone beyond code to provide additional class two and class trees, uh, to buffer the neighbors. So we have exceeded code there. Um, did, did you make sure I've hit everything? On the fence height, there is a new fence on the perimeter and we're happy to comply with code. Uh, but I don't believe in this zone, we're able to exceed the standard fence height by much more than that. And that also has some different impacts on the neighbors as well. So we are happy to stand for any questions. Thank you for your time.
Um, one question, Nicolette, if we, um, put a condition in there that we only emergency access between St. Andrews and Elder Street, are you aware of what process you might have to go back through with ACHD on a review?
Yeah, um, Chair, uh, Council President and Council Members. Um, so conditions like that do occur from time to time in the hearing process. And so, um, the, uh, TIS, uh, would just be updated, uh, to reflect that and would go through the standard ACHD procedures. Um, they operate very separately of one another. So maybe it's good to check in with like your own staff. Um, but those things are often, um, changed, um, separate from each other and they don't hold up, uh, delays on the project as well.
Councilmember Halliburton.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you have the ability to go to this slide where there's like a green, red and blue overlay on top of the?
Green, red and blue.
Looks like this.
Oh, I don't have that. Sorry.
So.
Maybe the staff does.
Yeah, it looks like, I can probably describe it. It looks like in that connection that you would be creating, that there is sort of an island and kind of like a little bit of a bull bout that goes around it. Are you saying that that's what ACHD said, uh-uh, to?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, and we, um, have committed in the conditions to work on another traffic calming measure. Um, and that is specific to our site and site improvements, but also ACHD still has the standard traffic calming committings, um, that the neighborhood can continue to, um, speak with, um, to coordinate other neighborhood, um, traffic calming measures. I would bet pretty heavily that there's different locations that need that improvement.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for applicant, Councilmember Morales?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm just kind of maybe more of a comment slash question, but thinking about traffic parking, it's a question, it's a question. Um, thinking about traffic, uh, truck parking, uh, you know, there's a hotel just down the street on Vista that routinely has problems with trucks parking in front of houses, which is, yeah, they get cited for. Um, but just curious if you have a recommendation for a truck driver coming through wanting to sit at one of these brands? Um, where would you, where would you recommend parking them?
Um, Council President, um, Council Members, um, that is a situation that is very unique to that specific user type. Um, and it's dealt with on a code enforcement basis regularly. Um, it is often gotten away with because of empty sites like ours, where you can just keep going down the street and pretend you don't get caught. Um, so I feel like a lot of that will go away as, um, there's a code enforcement.
Maybe I can clarify my question. If, if this truck driver really likes the brand of hotel that you're putting in and wants to stay there, where would you park them on your property as a guest?
Um, uh, Council President members, I'll see if the development team has any comments on that, but, um, I don't believe, um, that is currently allowed in, um, these specific brands, um, because that would take up a lot of the available parking for other tenants. Um, so that's something that, um, is decided by those, um, drivers.
Seeing some nods from the back, so I think that's, I think he nailed it.
Best guess.
We're, we'll try to come up with another curve ball, but I don't know.
That's unique to the whole city though, so.
All right, um, no further questions for the applicant. Uh, any further question for staff from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halliburton.
Thank you, Nicolette. David, I'm just curious, applicant just spoke a little bit towards, um, you know, fence heights, things like that. Um, is it typical for, you know, when there's sort of a, a property that has a hotel use or a commercial use for there to be an increase in height of fences or the barriers between, you know, the hotel property and then the, um, neighborhood property?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, usually the, the fences in these areas, we would like to see stay to the code standard, which is a six-foot height fence. I think in this case, that's what their site plan or the landscape plan chose, a solid six-foot fence along that perimeter. Um, I would note that I think their landscape plan does, um, indicate that, that buffer, that thirty-foot buffer is on a little bit of a berm, so that the fence would have a little bit of extra height because that, that area is bermed up a bit more. Um, but normally they couldn't, we would request that they stick to the six-foot or variance would be required.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Sted?
Okay. I was just going to speak to the fence question, but I can wait for deliberation.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, council, the member is before you, would entertain a motion to get the discussion started.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of CAR 23 dash 23 and SUV 23 dash 58, a modification of a development agreement to change site restrictions to accommodate two hotels in a preliminary plat for three buildable lots on eight point eight three acres at 3635 West Elder Street in an LOD DA limited office with design review and development agreement zone.
Second. Um, Mr. Mayor, just some clarification there. Those are with the, um, the development agreement outlined in the staff report.
Correct. That's as, as currently, um, written in the staff report.
Great. Second.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Um, I, the reason that I support that motion, um, is because I'm inclined to uphold the city's goal of working towards connectivity, shorter commute times, allowing folks to spend less time in their cars and drive fewer miles. Um, it sounds like we, we heard that ACHD, that first of all, that the applicant is committed to traffic calming features in front of their property and that ACHD has a traffic study in the area coming up later this year. So I'm, I, I'm glad that that's scheduled and I trust that they, you know, if that, as that study proves as the neighborhood supports that folks are generally speeding or that the vehicle count exceeds the, um, expectation, then, um, I trust that ACHD will take appropriate measures to calm the traffic in that area. Um, additionally, for the fence height, as was brought up. measures to calm the traffic in that area. Um, additionally, for the fence height, as was brought up, I know that it's, um, in my time on Planning and Zoning Commission, we spoke often about increasing fence, fence height. But, um, it was, it's often at the request of our fire department that they prefer a six-foot fence because it's a fence you could get over if you need to. And an eight-foot fence is much harder. Um, so yeah, that's for those reasons, I support the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Morales.
Um, I, I really like this project. I think, uh, the airport is growing. Um, we, we need this inventory. We have aging properties nearby. Uh, you have Hillcrest Country Club, mentioned Albertson's open there. Um, and I love that there has already been work between the applicant and the neighborhood to find a project that the neighborhood can live with, which is kind of, uh, refreshing to see. And so, and I appreciate that from the neighborhood's perspective as well. Um, appreciate President Malloy spending her time here tonight. Um, I, I do believe we should keep site improvement number five, uh, which is the emergency access. Um, you know, delineation between Elder and St. Andrews. I value connectivity. Totally love it. I think that's the ideal and I just don't think St. Andrews is the ideal right now. And I think we heard that from Neighborhood Association. It would be great to get there. And it's not just St. Andrews, it's, um, Roosevelt as well. I mean, Roosevelt's got like a three-foot sidewalk for a period that's got like power poles in the middle of the sidewalk. So it's just, uh, really tough little area that I don't think is quite ready for it yet, but put in the emergency access makes it super easy to open that up in the future if we can find ways to do it. Driving St. Andrews now, I was uncomfortable going to posted speed limit with the cars on both sides of, of the, the road, kids playing in driveways, um, that kind of thing. So I just, I think keeping, um, it just, it just doesn't feel like the ideal right now. I, I really appreciate the applicant considering all these things and saying, hey, you know, we're kind of indifferent on this. So I think if we can start working towards that direction, I think this is an area that, that can definitely use some improvements. We can get to that connectivity piece. And then in terms of that neighborhood, um, having, you know, instead of going through an empty, dry grass land, right, that it is now, uh, being able to have that emergency access point where you're going to have, uh, connectivity with biking and, uh, walking, I think kind of takes care of a big piece for the median neighborhood. So I would, I would love to see, um, an amendment to the motion, you know, whether the, uh, the motion taker would, would be open to friendly amendment to keep, uh, site improvement number five. Otherwise, I'd probably like to make a motion for a substitute motion.
Mr. Mayor, I was gonna say just before I'm open, I guess, to amending the motion.
Let's hear some more, yeah, let's hear some more council members before we do that, but thank you for that, Councilmember Morales. Councilmember Corliss?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I'm too, I'm really excited for this project. Uh, this is a great piece of property that's been vacant for probably too long for our growing city. And I think having the hotels there is a great solution. Uh, we need it. Our airport's growing, we're growing as a city and we, uh, we do need that inventory, as Councilmember Morales said. Uh, but I, I think I'm happy to see the Neighborhood Association here and be so involved with the project and the developer to be so accommodating, um, and making the modifications. My one concern, as I mentioned before, and, and as, uh, Councilmember Morales said, is I support connectivity. I like to see the biking and the pedestrian through there. Um, I, I'm familiar with this area and other areas like this in town without having the improvements, um, on the roadway on St. Andrews Drive, I'm very concerned about the increased traffic. Um, so I would love to see if there's some sort of modification we can make in order to keep that uh, for an emergency access at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halliburton.
Um, I think that this, uh, this application makes sense, um, where it's located. If I lived in the neighborhood and I could choose exactly what was going to be there, I might not choose hotel. Um, but also this is a good lot for a hotel. And, you know, when we're in our neighborhoods, when we're looking at what's going to be used in some of those, those vacant spaces, we don't always get to choose exactly what it is, but this makes sense for that location. Again, I understand. Um, there may be some other things that I would pick. I kind of went back and forth between, you know, letting that traffic go through, um, kind of promoting that connectivity, stubbing it. And here's where it really comes down to for me. I, I totally understand what the neighborhood's saying. If the cars aren't going to go through that direction, what they're going to do is they're going to go the other direction. They're going to go by the park. They're going to go by the school. And chances are they're going to go through somewhere else in the neighborhood. And so when we talk about connectivity, yes, um, you know, we want to be able to get to places in a shorter drive time, but hopefully the, the goal is to drive a shorter distance. Um, and drive through fewer neighborhoods in the process of getting to where it is that you want to go. And when we don't have the ability to move through, we're simply pushing traffic to a different area. And I'm not necessarily inclined to um, push traffic that might be wanting to get over to Roosevelt to go in front of an elementary school or go through a park if they could go through a straighter point and go through less neighborhoods and houses to get there. Um, so again, I, I understand it. Um, I understand that there will be an increase in traffic, but I think that there'll be an increase in traffic with this application, no matter what. Um, and so I'm, I'm in agreement with the motion maker of, of keeping that connectivity open.
Um, can I throw a wrench in this?
I'd love you to.
Okay, uh, uh, I would be interested in council members' feedback on the height of both projects, if they're happy with this. My concern here is that once we limit this, we don't get it back. I'd rather have two hotels here than a third hotel later. Um, I think that's a lot of different, uh, we're really limiting what this project could be with the height. So would be interested in council members' feedback on that, uh, before we make amendments to the motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Um, so far I'm not persuaded to amend my motion, but I wanted to address a couple of things that were brought up. Uh, Councilmember Morales mentioned that there's cars on both sides of the street and believe it or not, that is actually a calming method, a calming method. I think it's, um, you know, it's sometimes a little bit like careful what you wish for in a neighborhood because they prefer no on-street parking, but when you do that, it opens up the road for people to actually move quicker. Um, and so by allowing on-street parking and having cars on both sides of the road, you have to navigate that. You're usually driving more slowly, paying maybe closer attention. Um, also it was brought up that like the road's not ready for this, you know, we need to see infrastructure improvements before we allow traffic through. That's just unfortunately not how development works. We need to see, um, we need, we need it before we'll see it. So we need to get to that point where we need it. And it sounds like the neighborhood believes that they're there and I don't doubt that. And, um, and I trust that this ACHD study will bring that to light. Um, then as far as the height goes in a third hotel, I mean, I guess my perspective is that any brand that wants to open a hotel in Boise is going to do so regardless of whether there's an additional twenty to forty rooms available by other brands or not. Um, so if the neighborhood is happy with that height as it is, and they're already being granted, uh, um, a variance there or, uh, you know, that they're already have a height exception, then I'm comfortable with height as it is.
Mr. Mayor?
Maybe just to, um, respond to those concerns, I think one of the big things for me is Roosevelt Street does not have sidewalks south of Pasadena. So when you think about, um, and generally, yes, you get traffic calming from cars on both sides of the road, but you don't have sidewalks. So people that are navigating this new connection without a vehicle are in the road. And that's, you know, that's this type of neighborhood, right? It's not, it's not to modern standards. I think the emergency access really is the best of both worlds. You're, you're, you're getting the development, you're moving in that direction. Um, but it's, it seems to be a little bit more tempered hand. But I think that, that's one of the big things for me is the, the Roosevelt sidewalk situation. There's no crosswalks on Roosevelt right now. That's something I love to see from ACHD. Um, you know, a lot of these kids may be going to, um, heading west for school, if Hawaii is, you know, if, if things are changed there. So that's the big thing for me. There's no sidewalks south of Pasadena on Roosevelt.
Anything further, council?
Um, Mr. Mayor, in regard to the height of the hotels, I think they came, I think with the Neighborhood Association and the developer came up with a good solution. So I, I don't think I'd want to open that back up. Um, I, I do again, just want to press that while I know that the ACHD is going to look to do a traffic study in Roosevelt, I don't think it will include these roads on St. Andrews to look at putting in, um, sidewalk improvements. And I don't see where they would be funded in the future. I, um, as Ms. Morales said, I'm very concerned about the lack of, um, infrastructure there today and the current residents and opening that roadway up at this time. And I think the emergency access would be a great solution. Um, to allow those residents to still remain safe and to have a walkable neighborhood, um, and keep the project moving forward. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion or motions? Hearing none?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Morales?
I guess I would just make a motion to, uh, consider a substitute motion.
Okay. Um, Councilmember, I'm probably inclined to support the original motion. Um, so.
Let's take a vote.
Yeah, I mean, unless you want to block the street off and then increase the height of the buildings for a compromise, then I'm, you're probably, uh, vote short.
Can we ask the Neighborhood Association how they feel about that?
We can.
Click change closed.
I'm gonna support the original motion.
I'll withdraw my motion too. Consider an ultimate motion.
All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Nash?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Corliss?
Yes.
Halliburton?
Yes.
Morales?
No.
Four in favor, one opposed, motion carries.
Alrighty, thank you council for that robust discussion.
Maybe a break, act on a break.
Yeah, I was gonna take one at seven-thirty. I didn't think this one would go that long. So, yeah, we'll do a five-minute break, come back.
Again, you're most likely to have them.
Call this meeting back to order.
Yeah, anyways, but, yeah.
Okay, next item for us is SOS twenty-four-one. Vacation requested by Patio Covers Unlimited of Idaho at three-four-nine-three South Pheasant Tail Way. Jesse, welcome back. Do you have a slide to show this time?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I do have a.
Thank you very much. We're excited to see it.
Good evening. Uh, the item before you is SOS twenty-four dash one. It's a request to partially vacate four feet of an eight-foot private drainage easement and to also vacate Platnot eleven from lot fifty-seven, block one of the Lucky Harris subdivision number, uh, Lucky Harris thirteen subdivision number one. Um, this project is in council district five and is being evaluated under the modern zoning code. Lucky Harris subdivision, uh, number one designates eight-foot private drainage easements centered along certain property lines, uh, throughout the subdivision, including between lot fifty-seven and fifty-eight with a reference to this easement under Platnot eleven. The applicant is requesting to vacate four feet of the eight-foot drainage easement located on lot fifty-seven. Both ACHD and the Harris Ranch Review Board have relinquished any rights to this easement and the HOA management firm has approved the request to install the patio cover. Additionally, the Platnot vacation would only affect the subject property. One letter of opposition was received from a neighbor across Pheasant Tail Way with concerns about interference with drainage and water movement, as well as a lack of communication and notification from the property owner. While the request is to vacate a drainage easement, this easement is already paved with a patio and the request is intended to construct a patio cover, which will not significantly, um, impact water flow over the area. Additionally, the notification process required by the state code as well as required by the modern zoning code has been met. And in conclusion, the planning team recommends approval and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Is the, I was trying to figure this out. Is the drainage ditch already paved over?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, uh, that is correct. So it is a drainage easement. However, we do allow pavement, um, just not vertical structures within easement. Uh, with the understanding that the easement still needs to be able to function and, um, allow access for those who have rights to it.
Thank you.
Jesse, under the mark zoning code, did we change like, uh, vacation of Platnot public hearing requirements or those statutorily mandated?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, uh, we did not, well, it is made by the state that we provide specific noticing. Um, and we have filled out requirement in the modern zoning code. We did not change any of the state required, um, mandates.
Okay. Alrighty, uh, any further questions for staff? Um, is the applicant here? Are you in agreement with staff's recommendation? Yep, okay. If you want to state your name for the record?
My name's Rod Quumberg. I'm with Patio Covers Unlimited. The post that we're going to be using, there's only going to be two posts for this patio cover. It's only a three-by-three post. So as far as it affecting any drainage coming off of the concrete or anything like that, I don't see that how it would.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, anyone from the Neighborhood Association here, speak on this? Anybody online, anybody in person? Okay, um, with that, we'll close the public hearing. I'd entertain a motion, council.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of SOS twenty-four dash one, a request to partially vacate a drainage easement in Platnot located, located at thirty-four ninety-three Pheasant Tail Way.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Nash?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Corliss?
Yes.
Halliburton?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, way to go. We cut our average time on a public hearing tonight significantly down, so let's keep that up. All right, folks. Uh, next up, we have the Seville subdivision, S U B twenty-four-one. Uh, Boise City Preliminary Platte at seven-six-one-zero North Gary Lane, Councilmember Halliburton's district. Um, I'm just, I'm just buying time for Jesse. Jesse, you back up again? Okay.
Good evening again, uh, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Um, the item before you is a preliminary plat for residential subdivision comprised of fifteen buildable and six common lots on two-point-one-eight acres located in the R-one-C zone with a suburban land use designation. The project is located in council district number six and is being evaluated under the modern zoning code. On April eighth, twenty-twenty-four, the Boise City Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the Seville subdivision on the consent agenda. Uh, each lot in the subdivision will contain one detached single-family home and as proposed, all lots will meet the dimensional standards of the zone. The applicant is proposing an extension of Rygate Drive that aligns across Gary Lane. A Rygate Drive will be constructed as a public road with a thirty-three-foot wide street section. And the roadway will curve south and stub to the eastern property line to allow for future connection if those properties should ever redevelop. The applicant is providing the required ten-foot detached sidewalk that will tie into the existing attached sidewalk along Gary Lane, as well as the five-foot wide detached sidewalk along the Rygate Extension. Um, additionally, all landscaping standards of the code have been met. So in conclusion, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval and I'm happy to answer questions on this one as well.
All right, thank you, Jesse. Council, any questions for staff? Okay, is the applicant here? Um, could you state your name for the record?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers Rodney Evans, Rodney Evans and Partners, fourteen-fifty West Banock Street, Boise, Idaho, eight-three-seven-zero-two. Uh, we, the development team are in full agreement with the city's conditions and any other agencies that have commented on this project. So I would just stand for questions if you have any.
Council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just quick question, future bus stop there, you'll be working with VRT on that. Are you envisioning that would be a bus shelter or just kind of concrete pad?
I think it's just a concrete pad and possibly a bench at this point. And we are working with VRT because we've got some grade issues. So we might need to move it to the south. Um, but we're, our civil engineers working on that right now.
Thanks, thanks for thinking through that. I once had a bus stop that I had to walk through the landscaping to get to the, to the bus. So, thank you.
ADA accessibility of where they've proposed it and where we need to probably figure it out for them. So.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, representative from the Neighborhood Association here or online? Any members of the public here or online that wish to testify? Okay, council, no further questions for staff. Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
And entertain a motion, Councilmember Sted?
Um, I move approval of S U B twenty-four dash one preliminary plat for residential subdivision located at seventy. Um, I move approval of S U B twenty four dash one preliminary plat for residential subdivision located at seventy six, ten, north Gary Lane on two point one eight acres in an R one C residential traditional zone and subject to the conditions of approval.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, um, I just want to commend the applicant for, I think this is a great proposal. I appreciate the connectivity um, that this is bringing and the pedestrian connections as well as the commitment to, uh, the bus stop and working with VRT.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halber.
Yeah, uh, beautiful development, um, and a perfect spot for it. I mean, this is the kind of infill development that we want to see all over town. It's right next to one of our incredible Habitat for Humanity projects and just really a great location, um, close to future pathways, um, on a bus route, all the things I think that we're looking for. I appreciate the extra work in getting the ten foot detached sidewalk on that road because it can be a busy road and there's lots of kids that are walking to and from school on a regular basis. I'm sure there's going to be more kids from this neighborhood walking to and from school as well. So thanks for bringing this forward and, and a good development.
Councilmember Corliss?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what the other councilmembers have said also is we, we need these type of infill projects. We're in a housing crisis. And when we talk with people, the apartments are great, but people are looking for the single family homes to buy and you're providing um, this inventory form. So thank you. This is a great development and I'll be supporting that.
Okay. All right, no further discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Nash.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Rouse.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, thank you, council. Thank you, staff. Uh, next up, item number five. Uh, the Bilbao subdivision. Bilboa subdivision? Uh, S U B, I mean, I gotta we're gonna need some clarity if there's a typo on the agenda or not. If it's, there is, there is a typo on the agenda, okay, we'll, we'll ignore that and I'm sure this is all just fine. Um, S U B twenty three forty. Uh, under the legacy zoning code, we have Jesse once again, hat trick tonight, maybe more, nope, just three. Uh, Jesse, take it away.
Uh, Mr. Chair, or Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this is my last item of the night. Um, it is S U B twenty three forty. Um, a preliminary plat for residential subdivision comprised of six buildable and three common lots on one point three acres located at forty six fifteen with Colister Drive and an R one C zone with a suburban land use designation. Um, this project is located in council district six and is being evaluated under the legacy zoning code. On April eighth, twenty twenty four, the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval of this subdivision on the consent agenda. Uh, each lot of the subdivision will contain one detached single family home and as proposed, meets all of the dimensional standards of the zone. The applicant is proposing for four lots to take access from a common driveway on Colister Drive to the east and two lots to have direct access onto Maplewood Drive to the west. While detached sidewalk would typically be required, attached sidewalk will be installed on both street frontages. Correspondence received earlier today from ACHD indicates that the frontage improvements along Colister uh, should not be constructed by the applicant as the section of the roadway is part of a larger street improvement project. Instead, the applicant should be required to pay into a road trust and we've received, um, an updated comment letter from them indicating that condition. Uh, this will not change the design of the frontage improvements, but may impact the timeline of when the improvements are to be installed. Attached sidewalk along Maplewood Drive, uh, on the west side of the project does take into consideration the constraints of the farmer's lateral to the west while still providing some increased pedestrian connectivity on the roadway. Comments from the fire department and solid waste department indicate changes must be made to the proposed common drive and solid waste collection area. And this is, um, noted as a condition of approval. Another condition of approval will require a public access easement across the proposed pedestrian connection on the north side of the subdivision. And in conclusion, the Planning and Zoning, uh, Commission recommend approval and I can answer any questions.
Councilmembers, any questions for staff?
Yeah, quick question.
Councilmember Corliss.
Mr. Mayor, Jesse, thanks so much for the presentation. Um, on the proposed drive, can you comment a little bit about use of the fire department was recommending changes to the common drive?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, yes, uh, so as proposed, um, on the screen, the drive is a hundred and sixty feet long. Uh, while fire department code allows only a hundred and fifty foot long drive maximum without a turnaround. Um, the changes would be accommodated by reducing the drive by ten feet.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Counsel, I have a question, follow up on that, just a second, councilmember stead. We can shorten the driveway, but how do you access the other lots? Is it through Maplewood? Or are we proposing that these lots are not accessed from Colister?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, yeah, the common driveway would be, um, providing access for those four lots that it's touching, um, off of Colister Drive while the other two lots would be having direct access from Maplewood.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember stead.
Um, so when I was reading through this application, it looks like you, you conditioned it very well to kind of cover for some of the, um, deficits maybe that it had in the landscape, the waste, the fire connectivity. Is that typical at this stage to see, I guess, like to see the lack there that staff has to condition, I guess, to get it in a good spot? Because it looks like you guys brought it, brought it to a great spot. So I commend you for the work that was put into this, but curious if that's typical. I feel like usually we see the conditions that are more things that the city's pushing for, for our benefit rather than just for regular public health and safety.
Um, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, uh, thank you. Um, this was one of the last applications submitted under the legacy zoning code. And so part of the, the reason that it was conditioned a little more heavily to meet those requirements is because we were trying to separate, um, the, the overlap between the legacy and the modern zoning code. Um, but as conditioned, it does meet all of the requirements for the subdivision.
That makes lots of sense. Thank you so much.
Thanks for the public easement on there because I was going to ask you that and you said it, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halbert.
Um, just a question. So when we're doing like these, um, proposed ped connections, especially one that is coming off of what's probably a future bike lane on Colister and then connection to a part of our future pathway on the farmer's lateral. Is it normal that we just require a five foot sidewalk for, you know, a cut through? Are we, do we ever require more than that? Or is five foot just what our normal requirements are per code?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, it really does depend on the type of pathway. Uh, for some of these shorter pathway connections, um, we do allow the five foot, um, that does allow for, uh, people to be passing each other in either direction. Uh, additionally, the pathway along the farmer's lateral will likely be on the other side of the canal. So we don't expect this to be, um, as a heavily utilized connection. Uh, but we do have a pathways manager that does help us determine what width is appropriate for each individual section.
Great, thank you. All right, thank you, Jesse. Um, is the applicant in agreement with the staff recommendations? Okay, thank you. Um, anybody here from the Neighborhood Association, members of the public, online, in person? Hearing none? Okay, council, no further questions for staff? With that, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion, councilmember stead.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of S U B twenty three dash forty preliminary plat for a residential subdivision located at forty six fifteen North Colister Drive on one point three acres in an R one C single family residential zone and subject to the conditions of approval.
Second.
All right, council motions before you, any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Nash.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Rouse.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, thank you, council.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, for the record, is it Bilbao or Bilboa? Biloba?
Biloba.
Grandparent, it's the owner, it's, yes, it's a unique name.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you for that. All right. Thank you. Okay, uh, final item tonight, uh, is the appeal of D R H twenty three dash two ninety two, an appeal to denial of certificate of appropriateness by the Historic Preservation Commission at two, seven, zero, seven, West Heron Street. Uh, Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, this is an appeal of the Historic Preservation Commission's decision to deny a certificate of appropriateness application to reclassify the structure at twenty seven oh seven uh, West Heron Street from contributing to non-contributing. Uh, this application is being considered under the legacy zoning code and is in council district six. The subject property is located on the south side of Heron Street uh, just north of State Street and east of Lowell Elementary School. Uh, this is the front of the structure as it exists today. This is the, uh, Idaho State Historic Sites Inventory completed in two thousand and two that lists the structure as contributing to the North End, expanded North End Historic District. Uh, and I think it's worth noting that the photos included in that survey in two thousand and two do show the home in the same form, uh, design and materials as it exists today. So the applicant requested to change the status of the property from contributing to non-contributing, uh, due to alterations that were made to the structure um, prior to the survey, but after the original construction. After considering the evidence in the public record, the Historic Preservation Commission made a decision to deny the request. Uh, the reason for the decision was that the property does retain enough significance to convey its historical associations and connections to the North End Historic District. Although there have been changes made overall, it does convey its form, massing, overall design and some of its materials to maintain its significance. The Boise Development Code defines, uh, contributing structure property as a building, site or structure um, that adds to the historic and architectural qualities, historical associations and archaeological values for which a property uh, is significant because it was present during the period of significance and possesses integrity, reflecting its character at that time or is capable of yielding important information about the time period. The commission's decision and reason statement indicate that the property meets this standard. Subsequently, the applicant, applicant filed an appeal, um, of the Historic Preservation uh, Commission's denial of the request, uh, based on the following grounds for appeal. Uh, that the home was incorrectly listed as contributing despite being altered significantly and that the home does not have architectural or historical significance. The commission found that the alterations to the structure were present at the time of the survey and it was considered classified or it was classified as contributing regardless. Uh, additionally, in their deliberations, the commission decided, reasoned that despite the alterations, the home retains enough significance and historic association to contribute to the district. Uh, therefore, the grounds for the appeal, um, but submitted by the applicant do not demonstrate an error in the Historic Preservation Commission's decision. Uh, in conclusion, the planning team recommends that seeing council deny the appeal, uh, uphold the Historic Preservation Commission's decision to deny the application. The submitted grounds for appeal do not demonstrate an error in the Historic Preservation Commission's decision and I would stand for any questions.
Councilmember Halbert.
Um, when this originally came in front of the Historic Preservation Commission, I believe that the staff's recommendation was to approve the reclassification. Can you talk to just a little bit about why the staff at that time recommended approving the reclassification?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmember Hallie Burton, um, I'll, I'll do my best. Unfortunately, the staff member is out ill today, so, um, I'll, I'll summarize as best I can. There is an error on the inventory form, which I think the applicant has pointed out in their materials. It listed as a craftsman style home, which it certainly does not have any or many attributes of a craftsman home that you would, you would typically see. So there does appear to be an error on the form. That doesn't invalidate, uh, the decision of it as being, uh, contributing. Um, but I, I believe that, um, our Historic Preservation Planner felt that that, um, combined with the alterations to it that were in fact present when the survey was made could have also constituted an error and you're, you're correct, the staff recommendation was for approval.
Uh, thank you, Josh. Mr. Mayor, just, um, a couple more. Uh, I think also it was discussed in the meeting that some of the siding on the house had been replaced. I think that maybe it was three sides of the house had been replaced. I was curious, when they replaced the siding, did they follow the um, Historic Preservation Guidelines with the right materials to replace it? Or is it like, did they go from wood to aluminum or from wood to something that wasn't allowed?
Mr. Mayor, uh, councilmember Hallie Burton, I will defer to the applicant for that and I'll try and get that information for you, uh, in the meantime.
Perfect, thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Alrighty, um. Seems like we should have the is the applicant also the appellant? Is that you, sir? Would you like to present? It's Mr. Levitch?
Yes.
Okay, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Joe Levitch, uh, one, one, four, East Thirty Fifth, Garden City, eight, three, seven, one, four. Um, uh, council president and council members, I'm surprised that staff is not supporting this because they strongly supported it um, in the original hearing. So, um, perhaps they're supporting the decision that was made, but this, uh, this statement may change your mind. My company is Levco Builders. We're a nineteen year old residential remodeling company that enjoys working for clients with older homes. I'm represented, I'm representing a blended family of five that owns the home. They currently live in Kuna but want to move to Boise into a home that they currently own. Uh, and they've owned for quite some time, or five or six years after we either remodel it or raise it and build a new home. We're asking you for help. Um, I request that you reverse the November seventh to twenty twenty three uh, decision that was made by, um, the Historic Commission, which denied the request for, uh, changing this houses, uh, from contributing to non-contributing. Um, staff already read the rationale for, uh, denial and I felt that the, the rationale was quite weak. Basically, um, uh, it, it contradicts the rationale for becoming a contributing home in the first place. It does not reflect what actually happened in that meeting either. Um, in the Historic Commission meeting six months ago, there was supposed to be a very narrow focus on changing from contributing to non-contributing. Staff made the same presentation, which you were, I was under the impression you would hear. Um, and we also presented several, uh, powerful letters of support from immediate neighbors. Um, the North End Neighborhood Association, uh, raised fears of losing another historic home, which derailed the subject matter. After closing comments were made, this one historic council member said we need to keep modest homes in the North End so people can afford them. A motion was made and they voted on that, in my opinion, not the real reason we were there for the meeting. The consensus of the team at the time of the Boise Historic Staff in their presentation strongly supported my assertion that an error was made and that the status of contributing was inappropriate. And one of the senior staff members even said to me, this is the most obvious mistake I've ever seen related to contributing status in my tenure. The rationale for exclusion from contributing in the first place includes the following prohibited practices. One, the home had, home had been significantly remodeled with an addition to the left side. Um, it's clearly seen from the front of the home. The original windows had been replaced with, uh, aluminum windows at some point and has several types of siding on the front which have not been touched since the initial, um, inventory and the home has no specific architectural style or significance other than it's a hundred and twenty years old. Nothing has been altered externally since the drive-by survey was done in July of oh two, twenty two years ago. Um, by Christina Olson in anticipation of a future historic district. In her notes, she typed that the house was originally constructed, in other words, had no alterations and is a craftsman bungalow. Neither of those are true. Examples of beautiful craftsman bungalows homes are all over the North End and within a block or so of this house. This one is not one of them. It is currently a basic rectangular, single story home with a hip roof. Used to be five hundred square foot box, uh, with an added front porch cover and a shed roof over an addition on the left side with no foundation. It looks like an unpermitted carport was enclosed at some point for additional living space and then another carport was built onto and attached to that addition. I'm asking that you reverse the Historic Commission's decision to correct two mistakes. One that was made twenty two years ago and the other late last year that are preventing the owners of this house, which is on the fringe of the North End, from having That are preventing the owners of this house, which is on the fringe of the North End, from having the latitude to modify it. Or build a new home in that spot. If you reverse this decision, and I hope you do, I will still need to return to the Historic Commission. For presentation of our vision of what we want this property to become. And. And that, that is the reason for me being here and doing this appeal. And I appreciate your consideration.
Joe, could you restate the reasons why you believe this property is non-contributing? Is it specifically alterations that are made? Or what factors that would you feel like have been considered to consider this property?
The primary one is that an error, this is the only reason that allows me to make this assertion that. I want to change from contributing to non-contributing is that. It had to have been done in error, which I believe has been obvious to everybody, that it was not correctly categorized as a. You know, a craftsman bungalow and that it had a major addition and alteration to the front of the house. So those things like eliminate it from becoming contributing. And so I'm here. Basically, the whole rationale for the initial discussion was that. It shouldn't have been contributing in the first place. And I know that's a tough one. Because personal opinions were involved, it was done by hand. In speaking with senior staff, they say they see it go the other way sometimes too, where houses that should have been contributing weren't. And rarely do people come and say, hey, I want my house to be contributing. It always goes the other way. But this one is just like. So obvious that I thought. In my initial. Presentation to the Historic Commission that I would get their agreement on this. But it's difficult to let go of a house that's confined, but what it confines it to. Is not being altered on the front. And not being allowed to be made taller or have other things considered to be done with it, like raise the house, which.
So Joe, let's say.
That's it.
Let's say we were to grant this, we reverse this decision and tonight. And you had an opportunity to have a non-contributing property here that you make changes to, either raising it or altering it. Is it your understanding that you'd still have to go before the Historic Preservation Commission and get those changes approved as a non-contributing property?
Absolutely correct. Thank you for bringing that up.
Any other questions, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halbert.
Yeah, just the same question that I asked staff. You'd mentioned that three of the sides had been replaced. Were those replaced with? The, within the Historic Preservation Guidelines with wood versus vinyl or aluminum siding?
The front of the home has not been touched. There's. Different types of siding on there that are wood. On the backside of the house, other things have been done. I last, I think it's like fiberboard siding, which is not approved by Historic. You have to have. There's just a cobbled together house that's been. Remodeled over time to try and make it livable. And doesn't fit the needs of my current, current residence and. As far as siding is concerned. Yeah, I think it was fiberboard on the side and maybe back, but the front is what it was originally, wood.
Mr. Mayor, just kind of following up there. So in addition to that, there were the windows, aluminum windows that we wouldn't have approved, you know, now if they were going to be replaced. Are there any other improvements that are on there that have been done that don't follow the preservation guidelines that you know?
I believe that the, over the 120 years that the house was there. I mean, there could be different layers of siding or other things that aren't obvious, like there's a window that was boarded up on the front of the house. When I originally, the answer to the question is not that I'm aware of, just the ones that I stated.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Corliss, do you have a question for the other?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Joe, thank you very much for coming before us today. I just want to clarify, so originally. When you went to this city, they had approved it as non-conforming, is that correct?
No, no. What happened was I went. Five years prior, I had visited with the single woman that owned the home and I told her this house is like a wreck. Really, there's no place, I don't know where to begin. She went off and got married, has a family and lives in Kuna at the moment. They would like to move their family back. And asked me to come look at the house again and five years later. I'm looking at it and I go, this house doesn't seem, I looked up and determined it was contributing. I go, this gotta be a mistake. I contacted senior staff from the house on my phone, who looked it up on their computer and said, oh my gosh, this is ridiculous. Of course we're going to support you. Yeah, this should not be contributing. And that's what began the motions of trying to get this house. Changed from contributing to non-contributing, to undo what we believe was a mistake, but we can't get a hold of. Mrs. Olson and it's a subjective thing anyway. It absolutely doesn't meet the standards, so. Her subjective decision at the time was that it did and maybe it was clerical there, I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any further questions for? Not seeing any. Okay, thank you, Joe. We appreciate it. Any representation, nope, from the neighborhood association here? Could state your name and address for the record?
Hi, Sandra Herman, 1404 North 7th Street. Can you tell me how much time I'm going to get yet?
Clerk?
Excellent. I'm going to take three and a half minutes. Mr. Mayor or council and council members. Nina does support the HPC decision not to change the status on the home to non-contributing and subsequently its ultimate demolition. While the exterior on the house is in some neglect and there is some evidence of water damage and settling, it is not close to dangerous or completely deteriorated. If it was, the homeowner could not have utilized it as a short-term rental as they have. As a reminder, neglect should never be a strategy for changing and the contributing status of a property. This house has been surveyed twice and both times with the existing nonhistoric windows. The shed style addition is an example of how additions were constructed historically across the neighborhood as families grew and needs changed. When the property was purchased by the owner, it was purchased as a contributing home with the status as a known factor. The opinion about whether or not the addition was overlooked is simply speculation. We have no information on this matter either way. The front face of the house has been recited. It appears to me as, looking at it from the sidewalk, it looks like there's, there's two layers of siding. And we suspect that the original window openings are hidden behind that makeshift siding, making it fairly easy to revert. To a uniform or original window openings. The architectural style or mischaracterization of architectural style should not be a consideration as to whether or not a property contributes to the Historic District. We feel the lot size is not conducive to a larger home. The lot is quite small and there is limited space for a home with a larger footprint. It would be difficult to redevelop without going over the 35-foot lot, 35% lot coverage. Though there are many small cottages, modest Cape Cod's and bungalows nearby, none of the houses in the immediate neighborhood are similar to this one. The low-slung roof and stoop posts are unique. I have researched kit houses. Both Sears and Montgomery Wards have plans with similar roofline. I don't suggest that this was a kit house, but plans were also sold separately from the entire kit. And individual builders would use those plans and put their own spin upon them. We feel it is incredibly important to preserve as many modest homes as possible in the North End. The uncommon mix of historic homes, both large and small, tell the story of eclectic life, eclectic life in the neighborhood. Modern builders no longer find it economically advantageous to build modest homes on individual lots. Choosing instead to build entry-level townhomes and condos. Yet these individual houses remain popular and in demand in the real estate market. When we lose these houses, we lose them forever. There is no replacement homes of this style and size being built today. Already, we have lost several, several small, non-contributing houses over the past year. Without homes like this one, my parents, my in-laws, my husband and I would never have become homeowners. Nina feels that preserving homes like this one helps keep. The neighborhood diverse and accessible to lower-income renters and buyers. We again request that the city invest in a new contributing survey with an emphasis on preserving the modest home, houses. That are such an important and unique part of our Historic District. We feel a new survey would legitimize the opinion of the HPC and staff and stop the necessity of city council reviewing so many appeals. I'll stand for questions.
Okay, don't see any. Thank you.
Right.
Okay. Looks like no other parties of record here. Any? Follow-up or rebuttal from the applicant? Any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halbert.
Question for staff. Josh, I was looking through the transcripts of the P&amp;Z meeting and I thought somewhere I read there that this has been surveyed twice. Once in, is it 2011 and then once. Prior to that and it was labeled as contributing both times. Maybe I'm misreading that and it was only surveyed once.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Hallie Burton, to my knowledge, it's only been surveyed once. That's that 2002 State Historic Inventory Form.
Gotcha, great.
And Josh, could you, what was the staff's recommendation at the Historic Preservation hearing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it was for approval of the request. And I think as Mr. Levitch pointed out, our, our position tonight is not. It's essentially agnostic as to that recommendation. It is based on the ordinance standards for the appeal was an error made by the Historic Preservation Commission. Based on those six standards in the ordinance and we do not feel that they did make an error based on those standards.
Mr. Mayor, just one follow-up. If the. If the council agreed with Historic Preservation, what options does the developer have for? Expanding, doing anything else on the lot? The gestures don't help, by the way.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Hallie Burton, so contributing structures operate under a slightly different set of standards than a non-contributing structure. There is a higher bar for things like additions of front porch, you know, substantial, what we would call character-defining alterations. Are pretty heavily restricted. It's much more difficult to demolish a contributing structure. There are some pretty difficult findings to be made, so. Alterations can be made, updates can be made, the structure can be changed, but it is more limited than if it was non-contributing.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Okay, with that, we are going to. Close the public hearing and entertain a motion from council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the appeal of the Historic Preservation Commission decision on DRH 23-292. A certificate of appropriateness to change the status of property at 2707 West Heron Street. In the R1CH, single-family residential with historic overlay be denied as the appeal did not demonstrate an error in the decision of the commission.
Second.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmembers did.
I made the motion because I. I'm going to support, I support our commission and I support staff in saying that the. Even with that. The error that might have been transcribed in the survey, that it is still appropriately historic. And therefore it should be appropriately preserved and most importantly, I don't, because of that detail, don't find error in the decision that was made by the commission.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halbert.
The standard review of appeals is pretty narrow. And, you know, hearing it all over again from scratch would be one thing, but what we're really reviewing is, you know, did they exceed their authority? Was their decision unlawful? Was it arbitrary or capricious? I don't see it being any of those things. They stated substantial evidence in their findings. And because of those things, I can't find any error in decisions that they made, so I'm supporting the motion.
Councilmember Corliss, councilmember Morales.
Yeah, I think I would just say ditto to that in terms of what we're looking at this evening. Just want to thank, thank you for coming before us to go through the process and, you know, obviously. Tough situation, hoping, hoping the best for that family.
Yeah, I've had a few of these come before here. I have a real problem with it. I don't see a lot of. I don't know what we're trying to preserve here. This does not feel historic to me. It feels like we're trying to avoid gentrification and using Historic Preservation Guidelines to deal with that. It makes me even more uncomfortable that staff originally recommended that this not be. This be considered non-contributing. I think there's enough to go on here with the. The errors in the survey to base the Historic Preservation Commission's decision could be based in error. And. So for those reasons, I will not be supporting. The motion and I would strongly encourage council to. We need to, once again, take a look at these Historic Preservation Guidelines. I'm not convinced that they're, they're serving and meeting all of our needs. In the city, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'll also add that the staff is currently working on a grant funding for a new historic survey. And also. Has contracted with an agency to get recommendations on updating the historic. Guidelines, so both of those things are in the works.
Okay. Hearing no. Further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Nash.
No.
Sted.
Yes.
Corliss.
No.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Three in favor, two opposed, motion carries.
Okay, folks, it looks like the end of our business for the evening. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.